Welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting of October 5th, 2017. I'm City Councilor Bill Dwight and I will be presiding tonight. And as is our custom, we invite the public to speak before we convene, before we determine a quorum. And we ask when you speak, simply step up, state your name, your address for the public record. Keep your comments within three minutes. Three minutes is the deadline. You'll see a -- well, maybe you won't see because John's having a little problem logging on. But there will be a three-minute timer. And we ask that you keep your remarks civil. You are allowed to comment on us by name because we're public figures, but anyone else who doesn't qualify as a public figure, for instance, if your neighbor annoys you, please don't mention them by name. It's only fair. They are not public figures, while they may be annoying, I don't know. And also, the other rules constrain us from speaking because this is your time to speak, not ours. We will do plenty of talking after we convene, so this is your moment. All that said, with those caveats and invitations, we will start with Alan Burson.
Hello, my name is Alan Burson. I live at 508 Kennedy Road in Leeds. The meeting before last, you voted to reappoint me to the planning board after a considerable amount of discussion. I want to say I was impressed and very pleased at the thoughtfulness that I saw in the discussion. I think you took it seriously, not about me, but about the issues that were raised, and I thank you for that. I also want to thank the mayor, who was considerate enough to call me, I think, the next morning, leave me a message telling me what happened, because, of course, I had no idea that my name was going to be discussed at the city council meeting. And he didn't want me to read about it for the first time in the paper, which would have made me shocked and angry. So, thank you, Mayor. On the other side of the coin, however, I think there were serious issues raised by the type of objections that were raised to my reappointment. There was no allegation that I was disruptive in the planning board, or failed to participate, or had a negative impact at all. It was really a matter of what my opinions were. The point was that my opinions did not align closely enough with the two councilors who objected, so that disqualified me from serving on the planning board. Counselor O'Donnell didn't like the questions that I raised about an amendment to the zoning ordinance that had a lot of discussion at the planning board. Counselor Klein, excuse me, I believe disagreed with the fact that after the episode in Ferguson, Missouri, when she made some very strong statements about her opinion, and I emailed her disagreeing with those opinions. So, in both cases, it was my opinions that disqualified me from being on the board. So, I think this is a very slippery slope and raises serious issues. Counselor Murphy and Dwight both spoke strongly about the need for diversity of opinions, and I applaud that. So did the mayor, actually. The three of you talked strongly about the need for diversity. This is critical, because if only people who agree with each other are on city boards or participate in public discussion, then, best case, those boards or that public discussion will be sterile and boring and lacking in critical thinking. And worst case, I think it would lead to a repressive atmosphere where only politically correct opinions are welcomed, and hopefully, none of us want that. Last, Counselor Dwight, in speaking for diversity, mentioned in passing that he didn't think I was a member of his fan group, which may or may not be true, depending on the day of the week or the issue, but I can say that based on how often my daughter-in-law and my grandson are at the pie bar, we're pretty good supporters. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Adele Franks, please.
Adele Franks, I live on Blackbird Trail.
That's good, Adele, yeah. You'll be fine. The mic's fine, yeah.
Oh, good. So Sharon and I just came from a HeatSmart volunteer meeting. We, as members of Climate Action Now, are volunteering to help the city with their -- with the HeatSmart program. And so, I thought since we were coming to the city council meeting, we would make sure that you all are familiar with the HeatSmart program, and you all are familiar with the HeatSmart program, and people in TV land are familiar with the HeatSmart program because it's a really wonderful program. And what it is, is an opportunity to upgrade your heating system to a very energy-efficient heating system. The state is very concerned now about reducing greenhouse gases, and so is giving really very generous rebates for people who switch over to air-source heat pumps for heating and cooling. And the city has been -- has gotten a grant and has arranged for an installer who's giving a discount on top of that. So, it's a really good time to switch over, especially if you've got oil heat or electric baseboard heat. You would lower your costs and get cooling as well as heating. So, it's a really wonderful program, and I hope that you'll all take some of these and share them with your neighbors. And you can find out more at heatsmartnorthampton.org.
Thank you very much, Adele.
You're welcome. Is anybody interested in the audience? Can I have one of you?
I have no one else signed up. Would anyone else like to speak in public comment at this point? Okay. All right. So, I'm going to ask the administrative assistant, interim interim -- oh, that's just way too much. I'm going to ask John to call the roll, please.
Counselor Bidwell.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Counselor LeBarge.
President.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Shaw.
Here.
Counselor Klein is absent with notice. She's currently experiencing some medical issues, and she sends her regrets and hopes to be joining us again soon. First up, we have a poll petition hearing for National Grid's Woodmont Road, and this is a public hearing that's continued from the previous meeting. And I'll accept the motion to open.
No second.
All those in favor of reopening the public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So, first off, we'll start with the proponents, and Bonnie is here tonight to -- representing National Grid.
Hello, Bonnie Brown, National Grid. We are proposing to set a pole 150 feet northwest of Pole 9 on Woodmont Street. It would be a SO, solely-owned pole by the electric company, in order for, I think it's Northern Construction, to run a service to a pedestal to serve a light on the underpass for the bike path.
Any questions from -- well, actually, we'll wait until we close the public hearing, but are there any opponents or people wishing to speak on this matter? Your honor?
I just don't want to continue so we can open the call.
The mayor's -- should be noted, the mayor's a little anxious, waiting for the tunnel to open, and the community's anxious, so. I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor -- we have a first and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone have any questions of Bonnie on this issue? Counselor Nash.
Yes. So, I've ridden past the bike tunnel a few times, and so, there's a light there, a new lamp. Is that the lamp that's going to get power, or is there going to be an additional lamp going in on the street there?
It looks like that, well, there will not be a light set on the pole. The pole is simply to bring electric to the pedestal, and then I -- I'm not sure if Northern is putting lighting in the tunnel or just on either side of it.
Okay. So, there won't be an additional light on any of the poles there?
No.
It's just really for lighting the tunnel.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
As I understand, this is to just deliver power service to the tunnel and whatever facilities they plan on installing, and I believe one includes a camera and the light, was my understanding. Any other questions? Thank you, Bonnie. I hope that was painless for you. So, next up, we also have, this is item 17.380. This is a poll petition received from National Grid for Grove Avenue. And this is an announcement of a public hearing. It's not a public hearing in and of itself. In accordance with the provisions of Section 22, Chapter 166 of the general laws, a public hearing will be held October 19th, 2017, in these chambers, 212 Main Street, regarding the petition of National Grid to erect poles, wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways. So, mark your calendars, and maybe we'll see you again, Bonnie, if that means so. And there's also an announcement of a public hearing regarding the FY 2018 tax levy. The Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Thursday, again, October 19th, 2017, at 7:05 PM here in council chambers at 212 Main Street, Northampton, Massachusetts, to discuss the percentages of the local tax levy to be borne by each class of real and personal property within the city of Northampton for FY 2018 in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 56 of the Massachusetts general laws. Information regarding this issue will be available for public inspection in the city clerk's office on or before October 17th of 2017 after 12:00 PM. Now, we come up to recognition and one-minute announcements by councilors. Counselor LeBarge.
Thank you. I just want to announce that Conservation Commission has scheduled the Pineapple Valley Wagon Trails Dog Park. The date is October 12th. The time is at 5:35 PM. The place is at City Hall, second floor, hearing room. Planning board meeting, October 12th, the same date. We are the first ones on the agenda. The time, 7 o'clock PM. Sarah Schatz, who is the owner and is in the process of buying possibly 38 to 40-something acres on Glendale Road, has been working tirelessly with me on what residents' concerns are. We started walking Glendale Road on Wednesday afternoon and for the rest of the three days next week. I am highly urging the residents on Glendale Road, Brison and Park Hill Road extension to attend these meetings, along with many residents in this city, to come and voice support for this to happen. It is the state of the art. It will be a heaven for all dogs in our city.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Counselor Bidwell?
Yes, I'd like to announce that on Monday, October 16th, at 7 o'clock in the evening at the Northampton Senior Center, will be a presentation by Dr. Roger Kleigler. His presentation will be "Death with Dignity: The Doctor Fights for His or Our Last Rights." He is a proponent of the End of Life Options Act that is pending before the legislature, and I'm told he's a very compelling speaker. He is terminally ill himself. He's fighting for his own rights to have physician assistance, as he chooses on his terms to end his life. And that presentation will be sponsored by Northampton Neighbors, among others, will be taking place three days before a council meeting, our next council meeting, at which I expect we will be reviewing a resolution that would propose that our city council be in support of this pending act in the legislature as well.
Very good, thank you. Anyone else? I, the --
One more.
Oh, Counselor Nash.
So, I just want to announce that the Bridge Street School walking school bus had its first trial run on Wednesday. It was a big success. We are still looking for volunteers. We're also still looking for riders, walkers, for the bus. And if you just go to the Bridge Street School website and click on the PTO page, you can find the signup sheet for that. And we're also looking for, you know, people who represent Bridge Street School to also hop in every so often and help get the word out. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. I have this from the Veterans Council of Northampton. This, the Veterans Day Parade will be Saturday, November 11th of 2017. This year's parade will commence from Lampert Park, and that's near the Bridge Street Cemetery and by the Bridge Street School. And all units will form up around 10:00 AM, and will step off at 11:00 AM and proceed from Bridge Street to Main Street, and will end at Pulaski Park here, where the Veterans Day speaking program will take place. And they say, "We earnestly look forward to your continued support in order to make this a successful Veterans Day Parade." And then, they ask us to fill out the forms here and submit them. In the past, they still, if we haven't returned these, it's fine. We're still allowed to participate, so. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, councilors. I'll add one other parade note. Obviously, Monday, this Monday, is the annual Pulaski Day Parade, which will step off at 11 o'clock, off from King Street, at the former Northampton Honda/Blythe Ford lot, depending on your perspective on it. And it will obviously proceed through downtown and go to Pulaski Park for the annual Pulaski Day ceremonies that take place in Pulaski Park. So, that'll be happening on Monday. The other thing I wanted to just give you an update on, actually, this is something that Counselor LeBarge had requested that I provide an update on. You recall that earlier this year in April, we did the pavement management memo when I came before you to seek capital improvement funds for supplementing our Chapter 90 funds, and we presented sort of a list of roadway improvements that we were planning on doing during this construction year. And we're sort of getting to the close of the construction season, and so, I wanted to just provide a quick update on some of the projects and just kind of, you know, go quickly through where we are in those projects, just to give you a sense of it, as well as a couple of others that were kind of at the end of the memo that we're beginning the early work on. One of the first things on the memo is crack sealing, which is an annual exercise. That actually did go out to bid $110,000, and that project was completed in August of this year. You may have seen them out and about doing the crack sealing. We also did some of our elementary school and high school parking lots as well, Bridge Street, Ryan Road, as well as the Northampton High School. We did crack sealing, working with the maintenance departments of the schools. The next section of the memo was about mill and overlay and micro-surfacing. That primarily included, it was Ryan Road, which some of you who may live out there may have experienced that earlier in the year. That was about a 772, well, $772,282,000 contract funded by city bond funds, $500,000, and the rest, Chapter 90. And we basically, you know, did a mill and overlay of Ryan Road from Brookside Circle to 79 feet west of Burt's Pit Road Extension, and then Ryan Road from Florence Road to Brookside Circle, micro-surfacing. Those were both completed in mid-August before school got started. And then, there was a 1,000-foot section of Park Hill Road where micro-surfacing was completed. If you also were out on Ryan Road, we also, at the same time, a number of the crosswalk ramps were retrofitted to be handicapped accessible all along Ryan Road as part of that same project. So, I know that there was a little bit of disruption out there, but I think the finished product now is worth it. The other item on the pavement memo was Audubon Road. This was a primarily water service replacement, and we've, that was about a $958,000 contract for the paving, but it also included both water and storm water, about almost a half a million dollars in water and about $50,000 in storm water, as they were replacing a main water line. We've actually had, we've worked with the residents up there to do shutdowns of their water to do replacement, and then some culverts had to be installed as well. So, they're still continuing to finish the utility work, and we are hoping that that base layer will be completed by the end of this construction season, and then they'll come back in the spring to do a final paving. The other two big projects that were listed on the pavement memo were Day Avenue and North Farms Road. Day Avenue, this was sort of a combined contract for both of them. It was a little over a million dollars total value. That was, again, partially funded through Chapter 90, as well as our local bond funds. It also included $630,000 of water, $203,000 worth of sewer, and then $10366 of storm water, basically replacing water mains on both Day Avenue and North Maple and North Farms Road, replacing all of the drainage on Day Avenue, and then doing some minor drainage work on North Farms Road. The sewer mains and services on Day Avenue were replaced, anticipating that the new layer of pavement on Day Avenue will be, base layer will be completed this construction season, again, having to come back in the spring to do the final layer. And again, similarly, the patching will be done on North Maple and North Farms in spring of 2018. Hinckley Street, if you've driven down Hinckley Street lately, that is a massive project. The total value of that project is $2.9 million. And again, Chapter 90 is funding about $1.1 million of it. Storm water, if you saw those huge concrete drain lines that were all stacked up, waiting for that project, storm water on that project was $843,504. Water was $522. Sewer was $298. Sidewalks, $68,000, and then there was actually some traffic calming funds of $4,200. About 60% of the main drain and 70% of the sewer installation is complete. The water main work near Nanituck will occur later this fall. The new outfall and the two associated retaining walls to the south of Riverside Drive, which go out to the Mill River, are being, hopefully will be constructed this fall with some carryover into the spring of 2018. The bulk of the water main construction and sewer will happen in the spring, and we hope that the roadway and sidewalk construction will begin once all that utility work is completed sometime in the spring of 2018. That's a huge project, and you can kind of see how we're marshaling a lot of different resources, both, you know, Chapter 90, local tax dollars that we're bonding, and then obviously, water, sewer, and storm water. Then, at the, toward the end of the memo, we mentioned that we were doing some survey work called Chesterfield Road. That's a $7,000 contract, which is funded by Chapter 90. We're doing about 2,600 linear feet of survey work, and we're anticipating that when that survey work is completed, there'll be some design work done over the winter, and we'll be doing work on both paving and drainage next year, and bringing that forward as part of the capital plan. The sidewalk inventory that many of you are familiar with, that was a $66,000 project, and as well as a combination of Chapter 90 and sidewalk capital funds. We hired an outside consultant in the city to do this massive survey. They've collected thousands of data points. They're still collating and analyzing that data, and we're hoping to receive from them the final report and a priority list, which is sort of the end product that we're still waiting on, which will help inform our investments in sidewalks over the next several years. Damon Road, that's one that was also referenced in the memo. This is actually a state project, but the city will be responsible for doing right-of-way acquisition, and we will also be doing some water, sewer, and storm water work as part of that project. That is on the state tip, but the first step is to do all the right-of-way. You can remember, Counselor, on Route 66, a big part of the project was first getting all the right-of-way so the state could actually do its construction. So, it's going to be a big process to do that. Burt's Pit Road, which was the other one mentioned on the pavement memo, where we had funding in that for survey work, so a contract was just awarded for $45,000 to do all of the survey work of the full length of Burt's Pit Road, which is kind of the first step in coming up with a design. We're waiting for Mast DOT to approve that contract, but that work should begin this fall. And then, we're going to be working over the winter to do the design work on that once the surveys are done. That's, again, Burt's Pit Road from Clement Street to Forest Glen Drive. It's about 9,054 feet long by roughly 30 feet wide. We're estimating that the, again, very rough estimates, don't have surveys, don't have design work, that just the reclamation costs alone, just the paving costs alone, will be in excess of $1 million, just to do the paving. We also anticipate that there will be significant drainage and storm water work that will have to happen as a result of that road. There are six culvert crossings and that will need evaluation and possible replacement. And there are other storm water improvements that'll need to be evaluated, such as increasing the existing drainage capacity. There are some sections of the roadway that don't have any formal drainage that we're going to have to take a look at to either replace. And then, there are some main drains that already exist there that we may have to either replace or extend. Again, that part of the project could be in the, you know, hundreds of thousands. And it's interesting, because we just had this whole conversation about, you know, Houston and development and wetlands, and, you know, when less and less, you know, when there's less and less pervious surface, the impacts are, of course, on drainage. So, probably the last time Burt's Pit Road was done, many of the developments that are now along Burt's Pit Road from, you know, Emerson Way to Cardinal Way to, I mean, there's Platinum Circle, probably a number of those developments didn't exist. So, now, it's been developed, and so, what we find both on Burt's Pit Road, and we found it on Hinckley Street, and we find it all around the city, is our drainage systems that were built originally for those roads now need to be upgraded, because, again, there's been more development, there's, you know, more traffic, and there's also, you know, brooks and wetlands and other issues. So, you know, it's, when we saw what happened in some other parts of the country where there wasn't this attention paid to development and drainage and storm water, we see what happens. So, this is kind of a smaller version of it, but it's one of the reasons why we're now having, when we go back and do all these roads, like Day Avenue, like Hinckley Street, like Burt's Pit Road, we have to go back and replace all the drainage. The other one that was mentioned in the memo, I know the councilors to my left will be interested in this, was Hampton Avenue. We also awarded a contract to be surveyed as part of the Burt's Pit Road survey. That's been awarded. It's a lot shorter street. It's about 977 feet long by 26 feet wide. It's basically going to need a reclamation, which we estimate to be about $125,000. Again, part of the survey and design work will be looking at drainage improvements, water main upgrades. There's also some pedestrian issues that we need to address on Hampton Avenue and a mid-block crosswalk that I know TPC has been talking about as part of that project. So, that'll happen as we do the survey and design work over the winter. So, that's what's happened in terms of this memo that I gave you at the beginning of the year and the funding that you approved. And as we get to the end of the year, we'll now kind of, when the construction season ends, that is when the survey and design work will be done over the winter, and we hope that we'll be coming back to you next April with a new iteration of this, and some of the things that we've started work on will be completed and will be part of the plan for next year. So, does that answer the questions you had about that?
Yes, I appreciate that.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions about the pavement?
Counselor Bidwell. Sure. Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, that was very, very helpful to go back to the original document and give us the update. Thank you. I, from time to time, get an inquiry. You and I have spoken about this.
Yes.
Just, what is the methodology for prioritizing among what would appear to be roads in similar need of work? And I do my best to provide what I, how I understand the system works and the rating system that's applied, but I've mentioned to the DPW director, and I think, I think it may be somewhere between her shop and yours.
Yep.
Sort of a plain English explanation of how the decisions are made. And I think it would be, if, as the plan for next year is rolled out.
Definitely.
If we had that, I think it'd be most helpful.
It's definitely, I know we've talked with you about it. It is something that we're trying to put into plain English so people can see it and have a, have a, you know, we, there's a pavement index. and have a, have a, you know, we, there's a, there's a pavement index, and there's kind of a national scale for how you rank pavement conditions that we use and we follow. And then you kind of come up with a rating schedule, but it's not as easy as, okay, those are the top five.
No, I realize, and I appreciate it.
Then we also have to overlay onto that, okay, water, you know, we need to replace a water main, or we need to replace sewer, or we need to replace drainage, or, you know, so there's sort of like three different, four different overlays that have to happen. And so that's sort of, and then obviously trying to make sure that we balance, you know, Burt's Pit Road, Hampton Avenue, that we're doing them all in, in different parts of the city as well. So, but that is definitely one of the things we're working on for the next iteration of the pavement management plan as a way to really describe that to people so it doesn't feel like it's random. As, as, as much as you can, as much as you can describe that.
And I appreciate it. It's complicated. It's easy, it's easy to say, oh, just a plain English document.
The other, I mean, the other, I mean, obviously, the other limiting factor is how much money we have. So, you know, you may have a ton of roads like Hinckley, you know, you can really, like Hinckley Street eats up a lot of your funding, you know, if we're only getting a million and a half from Chapter 90, which has been pretty much where we've been at for the last seven, eight, nine, 10 years. You know, we've been slowly increasing our contribution, which is actually, many communities don't do that, and frankly, some communities, you know, like, why are we paying gas taxes and sending all this money to Boston and not getting any of it back? But that's a larger conversation. But yeah, we are, we are, we are adding more money to try to catch up, but that's also the factor is that you may have projects, you may only have so much money to work with, so you may be plucking smaller roads just to fit under that cap of how much money you have in a given year. So that's another variable that we have to describe. And then there's just maintenance, like the crack ceiling, you know, which is, again, pretty much every year, it's $100,000, but that's a way to keep roads from getting further degraded and slipping further down the, the pavement scale by getting water into them. So point well taken, and we'll try to, when we come forward next year, we'll try to have a, a more descriptive way of describing that for people.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy, then Counselor.
We did recently did a study of our sidewalks.
Yes.
Are we developing a similar comprehensive plan?
Exactly.
Prioritizing and fixing our sidewalks?
Exactly. And that's one of the ones that I mentioned, that I mentioned that's still in progress. There, they sent the data to somewhere like Wake Forest or some, some, someplace for anal, analysis. We found that there were actually several sidewalks that were left out for some reason, and so they've come back to reevaluate those. There were a few gaps in what they had on their GIS mapping. So we're hoping to have that by the end of the year. That'll be a roadmap for us to then start whittling away at that, that list of, I mean, the good thing is, when you do these things, you get a really good comprehensive list. The bad news is, you have a really comprehensive list, and you, you understand how much deferred maintenance you have. And then it'll be a balancing act of how do you, you know, how do you fund all these things? So, but that's, that, that'll be hopefully part of the, the next capital improvement plan program.
Thank you.
Counselor LeBarge.
We were talking about.
Yes.
Glendale Road. I was in a fight with it with the director from the Department of Public Work, oh, maybe about three, four months ago, and talking with five residents. And Glendale Road has had drainage problems for a long time, and it's serious out there.
Yep.
And hopefully, that eventually will get on the list because it's been many, many years. And even now, residents are, when it rains, it's all running down the road, and it's all the way into, halfway into their driveways. That's how bad. So when you're talking about doing roads over.
Yep.
This one is intense, just like you were talking about.
Yeah. And again, pretty much every road we do over, if they haven't been done in 20 or 30 years, drainage is going to be a big part of it because of increased development. And so, so definitely drainage will be part of that road and many other roads that have to be looked at, whether it's Day Avenue, Hinckley, Burt's Pit, and Chesterfield will also have some drainage as well, so.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking about it.
Any, any other questions for the mayor? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Next up, by the way, I should note that John's computer doesn't work, so there was no overhead presentation of the documents. Just, we're going old school tonight. We're doing old school. Next item is the consent agenda, which includes, this is item 17.365, which you recall we just had a hearing for.
What were it? Resolutions?
Yeah.
Oh.
Jumping.
Oh, boy, I passed right over that. I'm sorry. That was, whoa. My thumb flicked it up. Good point. I'm sorry, next item is 17.406 is the resolution. And this is the resolution opposing the expansion of the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School. And this will be a first reading. And in, let's see, upon the recommendation of Counselor Bidwell, Counselor Gina Louise Sharra, and Counselor Jim Nash. This is, whereas the Hadley Base Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School, or PVCICS, failed in February 2016 to obtain a charter amendment from the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education that would have permitted it to increase its maximum enrollment. And whereas PVCICS has gone back to the board, asking again for authorization to expand its maximum enrollment from 584 to 1,036 K through 12 students, an expansion request not supported by the evidence of unmet demand. And whereas the Northampton School Committee remains opposed to the expansion of PVCICS and will formally vote again on the matter at their October 12, 2017 meeting. And whereas the Northampton City Council in September 2016 voted unanimously to approve a resolution that was opposing lifting the cap on the Commonwealth Charter Schools, with a major factor in that decision being the objection that in FY 2017, about $2.2 million net of reimbursements is being diverted from Northampton Public Schools to six nearby Commonwealth Charter Schools enrolling 190 students from Northampton. And whereas this impact on the budget of the, of the Northampton Public Schools is substantial, representing almost 5% of the system's operating budget, funds that could otherwise be spent on priorities such as preschool expansion, providing French-Spanish instruction and instrumental music in elementary schools, adding teachers and adjustment counselors. And whereas the voters of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in November 2016 voted 62% to 38% to oppose a ballot measure that would have lifted the cap on Commonwealth Charter Schools, which would have paved the way for the creation of new charter schools. And whereas the voters of Northampton voted 72% to 28% to oppose that ballot measure, with all of Hampshire County voting 74% to 26% to oppose lifting of the charter school cap. And whereas the flawed funding program in place for reimbursing school districts for their payments to charter schools in place in 2016 remains unchanged and is underfunded, meaning that any time a new charter school seat in the region is taken by a Northampton resident, even more dollars will be drained from the budget of the Northampton Public School system. And whereas the inequities of charter school funding system create unnecessary tension and disunity in the communities across the Commonwealth. And whereas Northampton Public Schools, the Northampton Public School Department is paying $669,000 in FY 2017 for 56 Northampton students attending PVCICS. And whereas these numbers will likely increase if the requested PVCICS expansion were granted by the state board. And whereas a broad range of organizations, including the New England Chapter of the NAACP, Jobs with Justice, Massachusetts AFL-CIO, Citizens for Public Schools, Massachusetts Teachers Association, the American Federation of Teachers Massachusetts, and Northampton State Our Schools are all in opposition to expanding the number of charter school seats in the Commonwealth. Now there, now therefore, be it resolved that the city council, the Northampton City Council joins with the Northampton School Committee and Mayor David Narcoitz, and calling on the Commonwealth's Board of Elementary and Secondary Education to reject the proposed expansion of enrollment at the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School, and be further resolved that the city council president is authorized to submit a letter to the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education and to speak with the board chair, expressing, expressing this body's strong opposition to expansion of the PVCIS, CICS, I'm sorry, as well as this body's opposition to the addition of any new charter school seats until the charter school funding formula is fundamentally reformed. And be further resolved that Northampton representatives in the state legislature are encouraged to redouble their efforts to achieve fundamental reforms leading to more equitable and expanded funding of the Commonwealth's public schools. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second. Second motion's made and seconded. Would the author like to speak to this?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. I'll start by thanking Councillors Nash and Sharra for, for co-sponsoring and helping with the, with the drafting of this. And I'll thank the school superintendent and school committee member Rebecca Bezansky for their work on this, too. By intro, let me just make it clear what this resolution is about and what it's not. It's not about the merits of, of charter schools. Charter schools generally, or this specific charter school, that's another conversation for another day. This is purely about the way they're funded and how they are funded to the enormous detriment of our, of our own school system. And by way of background, the, the chart, the PVCICS, as, as was mentioned, is licensed currently for 584 students. They have around 500 now. They claim they'll hit their max in a few years. But the, and, but the real issue is that they're asking to expand to over, over 1,000. The school board originally said no, and much of the reason for the, for the state board winding up denying over the objections of their own chair was the opinion of surrounding communities that weighed in, communities like ours. So they're at it again. They, they, they are able to, every six months or so, go back, no matter how they were, how it was found before. So what this is really about, as far as I'm concerned, as I said, is not the merits of charter schools, but the financial impacts on our own school system. The, the funding system in, in place that funds charter schools, even when it's fully funded, doesn't make a lot of sense and is flawed, but it's not fully funded. And so what it means is that in the current year, 190 students, more or less, are, Northampton students are going to charter schools, and we pay out about $2.5 million. The tuitions follow the students to those schools. We do get some reimbursement from the state, only a little over $300,000 coming back from the state. So the net outflow in the way charter schools works for our budget is going out to the tune of about $2.2 million. And if this charter school were allowed to expand, one can only suspect that over time, there would be more students going there. And every student that leaves the Northampton Schools for a charter schools takes with them ballpark 12,000 bucks as a direct hit to, to our, to our own already strained school budget. So what this resolution would do would put us on record as being against this specific expansion. And as the resolution notes, opposition to the way schools are funded would appear to be heavily supported by our own community based on the way we voted on question, was it question four of the ballot measure, question four last, last November. And indeed, this body voted to oppose that ballot measure. So it's consistent with our track record, which is based on sound reasoning, I believe, to join with the school committee, to join the mayor in, in asking that the state board not grant this, this request to expand the capacity of the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School.
Any other sponsors wish to speak, this Counselor Sharra?
This session feels a little bit like Groundhog's Day. We, as we know, a little more than a year ago, we, the council passed a resolution against raising the statewide cap on newer expanded charter schools. Then as a state, we voted against raising it. Then six months ago, as Counselor Bidwell said, the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted against a charter amendment to expand this charter school, something that hadn't been done since 2011. So I don't, I don't really see what has changed in the last six months. There's wide agreement that the funding structure in the Commonwealth for charter schools is flawed. Additionally, as Counselor Bidwell said, the state charter reimbursement is not fully funded and doesn't seem like it's going to be in the future. So it makes no sense to expand a system that is so incredibly broken. And that's why, again, less than a year ago, voters in the Commonwealth, Hampshire County, and here in Northampton voted overwhelmingly not to expand it, despite extraordinary efforts made by the proponents of lifting the cap. So again, like Counselor Bidwell said, this is not about individual choice or people's decisions about their own families. I don't begrudge anyone that. This is about quite the opposite. This is about all of us, the collective, and about fixing a system that affects us all. We, as the council, have an important responsibility to the budget of the city, and the largest portion of the budget goes to our education system. And that budget is deeply impacted by this flawed system. It's our responsibility to speak out about it, and I thank Counselor Bidwell again for leading us in doing that, and also Counselor Nash for joining. So.
Counselor Nash.
Yes, thank you. I'm not going to wing this. I'd like to thank my colleagues and co-sponsors, Counselors Sharra and Bidwell. It's been a pleasure to work with them on this resolution. I especially want to thank Counselor Bidwell for spearheading this effort and pulling this resolution together. Our discussion developing this document was thoughtful, respectful, and worked towards the, the goal of common ground. I want to thank them for that, and I want to ask my fellow counselors to unanimously support this resolution tonight. To my knowledge, I am the first charter school parent to sit on Northampton City Council. I say, to my knowledge, as many charter school parents tend to keep their heads down around this very personal decision. However, I think I am safe in making this claim. My children attended both Hilltown and PVPa. Their experiences were rich and rewarding. Dora, Dora and I value that our children had this opportunity. That said, I can also attest that we continuously weighed the impact of our decisions, both in terms of our children's education and the impact on our community. For 25 years, our education system in the Commonwealth has been hobbled by the Massachusetts Charter School law. It is a law that is designed to create hard feelings and discord. It will not bring us together. It will not build community. It takes from many. It creates inequities. It underfunds everyone. It pits people against one another. Ironically, few, ironically, nobody knows this better than charter school parents. I have heard them say, say it on the sidelines of youth sports events and at family gatherings. Charter school parents understand that this law is unfair to their local communities, and it tears them up that their decisions as parents so impacts their community. Last fall, I attended a discussion at UMass sponsored by The Gazette to debate the proposed ballot initiative to cap the expansion of charter schools at, at the university in, in Massachusetts. We can all repeat the familiar arguments, but what stood out most for me was there was a young charter school parent from Boston who joined the panel to simply speak enthusiastically about her school and the success of her children. By the end, she was in tears. To bystanders afterward, she stated, "I am not stealing." A decade back, Mayor Higgins stated that we should not think badly of parents doing what they feel is best for their children. The problem is the law. That is where my colleagues and I have found common ground to co-sponsor this resolution. As a charter school parent, I am sponsoring this resolution and asking the Commonwealth to honor the overwhelming, overwhelming expression of the voters last fall to cap the expansion of all charter schools. Allowing the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter School to expand at this time would ignore the will of voters and only bring more hardship to surrounding communities. I also sponsor this resolution in the hope that we can begin to change our dialogue around charter schools and look beyond the cap. We need to stop pitting parents against parents, schools against schools. The status quo of the cap is not enough. We need a new law, a new funding formula. We need more equitable and expanded funding, and we need to include charter school parents in the conversation. Thank you for considering my thoughts, and I ask that my fellow counselors support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor LeBarge?
Yes, Counselor Nash, I want to thank you for the report that you just read off. I'm very honored of the language that you have. I'm very honored of the language that you have come forth with, and I am going to support this resolution. I supported what we did in the year of 216, and I will support this. And there is, there is a serious, serious funding problem, and we need a new law. I agree with all this. And I also want to thank all the sponsors for working on the language on this resolution.
I would just add how much I appreciate Councilor Nash's comments, and the difficulty and the complexity of this issue for a proud charter school parent. So I appreciate the agonizing and the thought. And I also wonder if, our resolution asks that our council president actually forward the spirit of the resolution. I wondered if, I'm putting you on the spot here a little bit, if you might consider forwarding your own remarks to the state school board.
Yeah.
Actually, Councilor Bidwell stole my thunder. I was going to ask you, given the fact that I've been signed up to testify, apparently.
And to visit, to drive in and visit personally?
Exactly. Well, I do know that the language has me testifying in hearings and scheduling me and stuff like that. And I also wanted, your comments are brave and really crystallize the conflict. And actually, the beauty of it is, and in fact, actually, I've always heard it represented on this floor and in this chamber, when the discussion has come up, was a concern that it was always emphasized that no one, none of this included a judgment about parents who sent their children to charter school, but there was always, there was always this sense, as you said. And in fact, unfortunately, every time we had a discussion about this on either side, it started with, "You don't like me, you don't like my school, and you don't like my school choice," or "You don't like, you know, you hate our schools," and so on and so forth. And it was very difficult to get past that, to discuss the commonality that you so succinctly put, which was the struggle, it was almost by design, actually. Unfortunately, when charter laws were created, it was designed, it was, one, to level the playing field, to create competition that would inspire greatness in all public schools. It didn't level the playing field. It canted it hard to one side and created the resentments that you described. And I know, and I've discussed this as well, and that it's a deeply personal issue. You don't get more personal in talking about how your children are schooled. Doesn't get more personal than that. So obviously, the emotions, unfortunately, were the ones that bubbled to the top, and the more serious discussion about the intrinsic flaws that are built into the structure of the formula, which has been the frustration throughout. And I think pro and, you know, pro and con, or people who have children in charter schools versus people who do not, it's almost as if this agitation were an intended byproduct of the legislation. We now actually have, on the federal level, we have Secretary of Education, who is sort of exacerbating this argument and bringing, making it more sharp and more contentious. And that's unfortunate. And I think, to Councilor Bidwell's point, your remarks actually stabilized the discussion, make it approachable and accessible. So if I'm ever forced to testify, I'm just going to read your comments. And the letter that I am going to forward will hopefully include your remarks. Okay.
I have a couple of scrivners. So in the B, further resolved, there's, should be S after the apostrophe?
Oh, you were doing, yeah, there were a couple of other things. There's a...
And then, and there was a agreement.
There was an agreement. There was also a past tense, I think it was the word opposed, when it should have. Oh, boy. So where's your scrivners?
Second from last paragraph, as well as this body apostrophe. And then, there was one that you got, so whereas, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, up from the bottom, whereas Northampton Public Schools are paying, or the Northampton Public School Department is paying?
Right, got it. And then I have, one, two, three, four, five, damn, there's a lot of whereas's. Six, seven, whereas the voters of Northampton voted 72 to 28 percent to opposed that ballot measure. It would be to oppose. Anyone else notice any other, these are scrivener errors, these do not change the body of the resolution, but...
Careful readers.
Paragraph below that one, there are two that, so whereas the flawed funding program, next line, meaning that, anytime, not that, that.
Meaning that, yes. Delete one that. One's enough.
And while we're at it...
Wait, there's more.
Wait, there's more. In that same paragraph that Councilor Sharif is referring to, whereas the flawed funding program, strike in place, because the in place comes later in that sentence, too.
You didn't want to be redundant.
Exactly.
If you could, Councilor Bidwell, if you, with the scrivners errors, if you could forward that to John, so that he can...
I would be happy to.
So, to the resolution, any other discussion? What's the preference here, roll call or voice? Roll call?
Councilor Bidwell?
Yes.
Councilor Carney?
Yes.
Councilor Dwight?
Yes.
Councilor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councilor Murphy?
Yes.
Councilor Nash?
Yes.
Councilor Donald?
Yes.
Councilor Shaw?
Yes.
All right. That passes unanimously in first reading. Next up, the consent agenda, and the items, and it's a chunky one, so I'm going to read them quickly. The first item is 17.365, this is to approve all petition for national grid on Woodmont Road. Also, item 17.407, appointments to various committees, this is to refer to the Committee on City Services. Okay. And then, I then approve the minutes of September 21st, 2017. And then also, item 17.385, this is appointments to the Whiting Street Fund Committee, returned by the Committee on City Services on October 2nd, 2017. The committee recommendations are not available at the time of the agenda publication, and the chair just stepped out, so hopefully before we get to that, we'll find out what those were. We have Joseph Musterco, 312 Chesterfield Road in Leeds, it's a term to run from July 2017 to June 2020. Also Andrea Murray, 54 Day Avenue in Northampton, the term to run from July 2017 to June 2020. Michael Shaughnessy, 575 Bridge Road 11-5, that's in Florence, term to begin July 2017, expire in June 2020. Michael Quinlan of 712 Bridge Road in Florence, the term starting July 2017, expire in June 2019. Marilyn Richards of 20 Bridge Road Number 8 in Florence, the term to start July 2017, expire June 2018. Also, we have item 17.395, this is appointments to various committees, returned by the Committee on City Services, again, without the recommendation yet, so we'll find that out soon. But we have Casey Fowler, 91 West Hampton Road in Florence, this is a term to start September 2017, expire in June 2020. This is filling the vacancy. And then transportation and parking, Benjamin Albro Fisher of 50 Manhattan Street in Northampton, term to start June 2017, expire in June 2020, it's a reappointment. The Arts Council, Alan Schneider of 231 Main Street in Leeds, term to start September 2017, expiring June 2020. Actually, so members of the body, do you recall what the recommendations were? Did these all proceed with a positive recommendation?
Yes.
May I ask for a removal, Mr. President?
Yes, what would you like to pull?
Michael Shaughnessy?
All right, so Michael Shaughnessy, we'll move that from the consent agenda, and we'll come back to that after we vote on the consent agenda. Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Motion's made to approve and seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. Okay. So Michael Shaughnessy, 575 Bridge Road, this is an appointment to the Whiting Street Fund Committee. First of all, accept a motion?
Move is approved.
Second?
I would just like to abstain. It's probably not necessary, but he's my campaign treasurer. I don't think there's a real financial conflict, but just out of an abundance of caution, I'll abstain.
I appreciate the gesture, so. Any other discussion on Mr. Shaughnessy's appointment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Abstentions. So now, we slip into recess, a gentle recess into the Committee on Finance, which will be chaired by Councilor Murphy. It's actually a beefy one, and you have the gavel, sir.
We'll move right along. John, would you call the role of Finance?
Councilor Murphy?
I'm here.
Councilor Carney?
President?
Councilor LeBarge?
President?
Councilor Nash?
Here.
Excellent. We're all here, so the first item of business is to approve the minutes of September 21st, 2017. We have a motion, we got a motion. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, the first thing we have, again, upon the recommendation of the mayor, as all of these are, it's 17.400, an order to establish revolving fund for the Survival Center. Order that the city hereby establishes a revolving fund under Mass. General Law 40, Section 3, for the deposit of proceeds from the rental and lease of the Survival Center property on Prospect Street, starting in fiscal year 2018, which began on July 1, 17. And the city hereby accepts the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 3, which allows any balance remaining in the Survival Center revolving fund to be carried over in the revolving fund at the end of each fiscal year, and allows the expenditure of funds for the upkeep and maintenance of the Survival Center under the direction of the Director of Central Services, starting in fiscal year 2018. Whereas the current fund balance in the Survival Center receipt reserved account shall be transferred to the revolving fund established hereunder, and upon such transfer, the receipt reserved account shall be abolished. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
And the mayor's here for questions.
I can explain it in three words, Municipal Modernization Act. So this is another in a series of tweaks in the, you know, thousands of little minutia in Municipal Modernization Act, whereby basically, under old accounting principles, there were these rental funds that were in various types of different funds, and so now, under the new Municipal Modernization Act, DOR wants them in revolving funds. So we're basically, you know, places where we had rental receipts reserved, we're basically asking you to transfer them. You'll see another one later in your agenda, same thing. So we're basically, not any change to the amounts or the dollar, we're just putting it in the right type of fund.
And the purpose remains the same?
Exactly.
Maintain the facility that the Survival Center rents from us.
Exactly, yes. And that those funds are used to make any repairs to the, to the structure, as the landlord.
Any questions for the mayor on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No, thank you. This is 17.401, in order to provide funds for extraordinary maintenance at the Northampton Public Schools Ground Maintenance Shop, which is actually in the same place, I think. City Council appropriates $11,000 from gift fund 2547-265 Prospect Street gift funds for the purpose of providing funds for extraordinary maintenance needed at the Northampton Public Schools Grounds Maintenance Shop located at 265 Prospect Street. Such funds shall be used for repairs to the building's roof. Do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second? Okay, and the mayor's here for this?
This is, this is a separate fund related to Prospect Street. It actually is a gift fund, it's not a rental fund. And it's funds that were set aside to basically take care of maintenance related to the non-survival center part of the building, which is primarily the grounds shop for the NPS. You may recall, last year, we had to do work on a furnace there. Now they have a leaky roof, so we're asking to use some of the funds to secure the roof before the winter. I was going to ask, we just, I just found out from Tony Kushneris, who's the maintenance person at the schools, that the roofer has indicated that they have an opening in their schedule and can actually start on it early next week. So I was going to ask, we didn't know this, but I was going to ask if we could get two readings on this tonight, so we could take advantage of, you know, a contractor who's available now, and we don't know when he will be again. So that's, I would request, when you go to the meeting, if we could get two readings. Again, it's money that's in a gift fund, we're just asking to use it on the intended purpose for the gift fund.
And I can concur, I'm trying to do it right now, too, so if you can get them...
The window is closing on roofer's, yes.
Any questions for the mayor? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And the next one is 17.403, in order to authorize acceptance of a gift for the Hampshire Hope Remembrance Quilt. Order that the city of Northampton gratefully accepts the donation of $1,500 from Florence Savings Bank to the Health Department for Hampshire Hope Remembrance Quilt, to be made from the pictures of loved ones who have passed from opioid addiction or in recovery, and approves use of the funds from the gift fund, this fund number 2523, to pay for the quilt to be made and displayed at future Hampshire Hope events in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second? Any updates on this one?
Just that, you know, we had a wonderful Hampshire Hope Night of Remembrance event at Union Station earlier this year, where family members who'd lost loved ones to the opioid crisis came and brought photographs, and Meredith O'Leary and Sherry Sullivan mentioned that one of the things they were going to try to do was make them into sort of a quilt. And the president of Florence Bank stood up during his remarks and said, because they had been a sponsor, and said, you know, "We're a sponsor, and we also want to help pay for that quilt, so we will..."
Take him up on it.
Yes. So this is a gift that they've put forward of $1,500 to help pay for those expenses. So, again, we want to gratefully accept that on behalf of the Health Department and the Hampshire Hope.
Questions for the mayor on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I think you might have missed item 402.
Did we zip right by something?
It's another revolving...
Oh, the James House. It must have got stuck together here. My goodness, there's the James House. They need money, too. All right, backing up to 17402, this is to establish the same kind of revolving fund for the James House property, that we've already done one of. Again, 17402, order that the city hereby establishes a revolving fund under Mass. General Law 40, Section 3, for the deposit of proceeds from the rental and lease of the James House property on Gothic Street, starting in fiscal year 2018, which began July 1, 17. The city hereby accepts the provisions of Mass. General Law 40, Section 3, which is, allows any balance remaining in the James House property revolving fund to be carried over in the revolving fund at the end of each fiscal year, and allows the expenditure of funds for the upkeep and maintenance of the James House under the direction of the Director of Central Services, starting in fiscal year 2018. We have a motion on that one?
Make a motion.
Second? Same thing? Any questions for the mayor on this one?
Same.
All right. Hearing no questions, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the next is 17404, and this is upon the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, and this is to appropriate funds for community preservation purposes. And if everyone remembers, there are certain community activities that are eligible for funding, so what we do is, we take their balance and we split it amongst the various funds, and then they spend that money for each of those purposes, and as I read them off, you'll, you know, you'll probably remember what those purposes are. So order that the following amounts be appropriated or reserved from the fiscal year 2018 Community Preservation Fund, estimated revenues of $1,494,000. So the 1,057,000 is the FY local assessment estimate, and they would add a... add a $275,000 state match to that, that's where it comes from. So, $164,000 from the FY total estimated CPA revenue would go to the Community Preservation Fund for open space. $164,000 from the FY total estimated CPA revenue reserve would go to the Community Preservation Fund for historic preservation. $164,000 from the FY eighteen total estimated CPA revenue to the Community Preservation Fund for affordable housing. $65,000 from the FY eighteen total estimated CPA revenue to the Community Preservation Administrative Account, and $937,000 from the FY eighteen total estimated CPA revenue reserve to the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve, that would then remain eligible to be spent in any of those areas. Also, the following accounts to be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve for FY eighteen Community Preservation, bonding payments, these are payments being made from this money on projects that are ongoing and where money has been borrowed. $65,000 for principal and $13,775 for interest for the Bean Farm Bond. $95,000 for principal and $31,250 for interest for Florence Fields Bond. $265,000 for principal and $26,500 for interest for the Pulaski Park Number One Bond, and $67,500 for principal and $21,417 for interest for the Pulaski Park Number Two Bond. So, and that, that I'm assuming adds up to the total amount?
Yes, and the other reason we have to do this is because Susan Wright has to submit the recap to the state of our FY eighteen budget.
And account for the money.
They won't set the tax rate unless they see that our FY eighteen budget is all properly aligned, and this money is.
And distributed to the accounts.
So, once this gets approved, she'll be filling out a form and finishing up all of her work to send it off to DOR, so that's the.
And then send our tax rate in the near future.
Yes.
All right, do we have a motion on this in finance?
Make a motion.
Second. Any other discussion on these? Councilor O'Donnell.
Mr. Mayor, is there a balance in the Housing Reserve Fund, the CPA Housing Reserve Fund, for affordable housing?
I'm looking at the CPA Administrator, sitting a few feet away.
As I recall, we used it up in the spring, so it's back to.
We zeroed it out, okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Sometimes housing, sometimes there's not always a housing project brought forward, but we used it up this past spring.
Yeah, between the Hatt Project and the Lumberyard Project, that probably got a lot of funding.
Yeah.
Any, any other questions on this one, the mayor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions at all on this? Then, in finance, hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then, the last thing is something that are going to make people very happy for the holiday season. This is seventeen four oh five, upon the recommendation of Mayor David Narkowitz, this is in order to suspend the collection of parking fees for certain days in November and December of 2017. Order that on the following days, collection of fees for on-street and off-street parking spaces, excluding the garage. They'll be suspended Friday, November 24th, infamously known as Black Friday, Saturday, November 25th, Small Business Saturday, and Saturday, December 23rd, which is the day before Christmas Eve, and as Councilor Carney pointed out, the 24th is a Sunday, so we wouldn't be collecting fees anyway, so this is essentially.
First night is a Sunday this year, so we don't have to.
You don't have to worry about first night, yeah.
Change for first night.
So, it would be November 24th, Black Friday, November 25th, which is Small Business Saturday, and December 23rd, which is the last day before Christmas, we would be charging anyway, to let people come do their Christmas shopping, so, do we have a motion in finance?
Make a motion.
Second. Okay. Mr. Mayor, any questions for the mayor?
Quick question. So, this includes the on-street parking downtown?
Yes.
So it's just, okay, all right.
Yes.
I mean, in years past, we'd kind of mix it up a little?
Yeah, I know during first night, there was confusion, because we often only did the lots, we didn't do Main Street, because we were trying to make sure that businesses could still, you know, have, have customers get to their stores on, but, because it falls on a Sunday this year, it's not really in play. But yeah, this is for everything except the garage, the garage, because of the way the garage functions, we can't, that one has to remain.
There would be a guaranteed parking space if you go to the garage, probably.
Probably, yeah. There's always, there's always plenty of inexpensive parking in the garage, we like to say, so, yeah. Least expensive garage in North America.
Bargain every day.
Yes.
I have another question. Do you have an estimate of just what the forgone revenue is from this?
I don't, we could certainly run some numbers on it, this is something we, in years past, there were actually longer periods of free parking, and then we sort of did away with that, and then we were sort of always doing the first night, and so last year, I think for the first time, we decided to do, try to acknowledge the Small Business Saturday, which is now kind of a national celebration, and then, you know, the Black Friday thing, which, I don't know if that's a real thing or not, but, just to acknowledge the highest volume shopping day, so, yeah. But we can, I can try to get you some estimates, at least on the years when we haven't, when we have charged for parking.
I think it'd be worth note, it'll never show up in our audit as such, but in fact, it's a, it's a way the city is investing in the vitality of downtown. Be worth quantifying.
Councilor O'Donnell?
But, just for the record, parking revenue is not general fund, it supports the parking system.
True, that is true.
It's not like we're removing revenue from other services in the city or anything like that, so, important point.
I mean, it is revenue that does support some general fund activities, like police and DBW downtown, but for the most part, it's going back.
It's a nexus to.
Going back into the parking system, yeah, so. So, but I can, I can try to look at what, what some of those days may have yielded in the past years. So, yeah, it's going to be somewhat skewed by the fact that we've raised parking rates since then, but we can try to figure that out, so.
Any other questions for the mayor on this one? Council LeBarge?
Mayor, Saturday, November 25th, when is the parade in Florence, the Christmas Parade?
That's typically the day after Thanksgiving, so, that's usually the Saturday after Thanksgiving, right? I think that's.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's that same day, yeah. I'm declaring free parking in all of Florence that day. Wow, actually, there's free Florence, parking every day in Florence, so yes.
What about Leeds?
What's that? And Leeds, exactly. So, yeah, but that is the day of the parade, yes. It also happens to, just this year, again, by the way the calendar falls, it's also Small Business Saturday, so.
So, we good with questions on the days we're not charging for parking, then, all of those?
And I just, one, and then one question, it's like, I, I know this is, on finance, I wasn't sure if it needed to be referred to TPC, that was the only other question. I don't know.
I don't think it needs to be.
Yeah, it's really just a suspension of an ordinance for three days, basically.
I would defer to the council on that, I have a strong opinion, every time it has come, it's been resoundingly approved.
Yeah, so I, that's why we introduced it now, because we didn't know if it had to make its way to TPC and come back before, but I, anyway, I just wanted to raise that, that's why we were bringing it forward in October, so, yeah.
Very good. No more questions? Just keep ahead, this was a very highly questioned order. So, all in favor of a positive recommendation in finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. So unless there's any other business for finance? Thank you.
Make a motion.
All in favor? Okay. Take it away.
Thank you all very much, we've got our recess, and we're going to come right back to those very same financial orders in order. So, first up is item seventeen point four hundred, it's in order to establish a revolving fund under the direction of the Director of Central Services for the Survival Center, in first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion on this? Roll call, please, John.
Councilor Carney.
Yes.
Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Councilor LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading, we visited at our next meeting. Item seventeen point four oh one, this is in order to provide funds for extraordinary maintenance at Northampton Public School Grounds Maintenance Shop, and there's a request for two readings on this one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
That passes in first reading.
Move to suspend rules.
Motion's made to suspend rules to allow for a second reading. Motion, second. Second motion. Split the difference. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor of suspending rules to allow for a second reading, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Second reading?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, for a second reading. Any further discussion? Roll call on this, please, John.
Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Councilor.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item seventeen point four oh two, this is in order to establish a revolving fund under the direction of the Director of Central Services for the James House property, first reading.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney. Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
All right, that passes in first reading, and will be reviewed again, another vote at our next meeting. Item seventeen point four oh three is in order to authorize acceptance of $1,500 for the Hampshire Hope Remembrance Quilt.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, discussion? Roll call, please.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
All right, that passes in first reading. Item seventeen point four oh four, this is in order to appropriate funds for the community preservation purposes, first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussions on this point, on the allocations and the dispersal and distribution? Not dispersal yet. Roll call, please.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading. Item seventeen point four oh five is in order to suspend the collection of parking fees for certain days in November and December 2017.
Move to approve.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? This is pretty well vetted, okay. Roll call, please.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
That passes in first reading. Item seventeen point three nine two, this is in order to authorize reprogramming of funds to the fire station project, this is a second reading.
Second, move to approve.
Second.
It's made and seconded, Council LeBarge and Council O'Donnell, any discussion? Set, roll.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved in second reading. Item seventeen point three nine three, this is in order to appropriate funds to pay for carpeting at the fire stations, also a second.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Council Dwight.
Yes.
Council Klein. I'm sorry. Council LeBarge.
Yes.
Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Nash.
Yes.
Council O'Donnell.
Yes.
Council Shaw.
Yes.
Council Bidwell.
Yes.
Council Carney.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Item seventeen point three nine four is in order to authorize payment of a prior year bill, second reading.
Move approval.
Motion's made, was there a second?
Yeah.
Oh, you got one?
Why, seconded, okay.
Discussion?
No, I did something.
Roll call?
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Biddel?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Now, we're into orders, and the first order up is seventeen-point-three-nine-one. This is an order of taking, to authorize a taking by eminent domain parcel property identified on assessor's map, thirty-two C, parcel three forty-eight, and this is second reading.
Move to approve.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion on this taking? Counselor O'Donnell?
What was the planning board's, could we review the planning department's response about our request to?
Yeah, let me see.
Are they going to bring new language?
Excuse me.
I believe it's a, if they did, then it's technically different than last time, if I'm not mistaken.
Trying to see if it's one of the attached documents that, can't tell by the. So, you think the eminent domain order is changed?
Oh, I apologize. I jumped, I jumped a full one ahead. It's completely my fault.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I said. I jumped, I jumped.
Yeah, okay. Good, because you freaked me out there a little bit.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Phew.
So, call the question.
Okay. So, we're back to the original order.
Enthusiastically.
Any other discussion on this, or alerts? Okay. Roll call, please, John, on item seventeen-point-three-nine-one.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Biddel?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
That passes in second reading. Now, are the ordinances, item seventeen-three-four-eight, this is an ordinance to clarify parking lot design criteria when installing photovoltaic canopies over surface parking lots, and this is the first reading, is to continue from the previous meeting. There is a memo, and I, I heard from Carolyn, she was not able to be here tonight. So, Carolyn said that, but anyway, this is ray, the modifications to ordinance, item seventeen-point-three-four-eight, an ordinance to clarify parking lot design criteria when installing photovoltaic canopies over surface parking lots. The attached ordinance incorporates modified text requested by the council at its September twenty-first meeting. The amended text will provide flexibility to the planning board when reviewing projects that include PV canopies over parking lots. This modified text was discussed at the planning board meeting on September twenty-eighth, and it was unanimously supported by the board. In reviewing the text, the board also debated whether an allowance for off-site tree planting would be appropriate. However, the board determined that such consideration would overly complicate the permit for respective developers and felt that waivers from onsite provisions would adequately address their concerns. Is, was that what you were asking about that?
So, is it, is it the president's understanding that we should move to substitute the language, or?
Yes, and they actually, let me see, I believe, let me see.
Attached to the memo is the.
Yeah, is the modified language.
Just modified language?
Mm-hmm. So, it now reads, in fact, I was, I was, um, let me make sure I've got the right amended version. Yes. In, and now insert, "Surface parking lots with more than seventy-five parking spaces, the expansive pavement shall be interrupted by separating rows of parking spaces from each other and from driveways by using planting strips, which may also contain pedestrian sidewalks at least six feet in width. Provision of these planting strips shall take into account the need to source snow, to locate light poles, to allow safe pedestrian movement, to maximize emergency access, and to separate different traffic movements. In addition, if an existing parking lot is expanded to over seventy-five spaces, planting strips shall be required for an entire lot. All proposals to construct or modify such parking lots shall be reviewed by the planning board in light of the requirements of this section." New language. "The calculation for determining whether planting strips are required does not apply to the portion and number of parking spaces that are covered by one or more photovoltaic canopies. And also, surface parking lots with over fifteen parking spaces serving uses, serving uses located in business industrial, business park or planned village districts must have at least one shade tree, minimum two-inch caliper for every fifteen provided parking spaces. And then, the number of trees per fifteen parking spaces required for all spaces that are not covered by photovoltaic canopies." It's the new language. It's not a substantive change, but it is, it would warrant more hearings, I don't think. That's, that's my conclusion. It's not necessarily held by all, but possibly, but, actually, with the motion, it's, it would be, yeah, we'll all accept the motion in a second, on just for purposes of discussion at least.
I'll move it as amended.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. So, further discussion on this item? Counselor O'Donnell, did that adequately address the, your thoughts and concerns on this, or the?
Sure. Isn't that the new language?
That's, yeah.
I think the new language might be slightly different. I'm not sure if you, or it could be that.
I remember.
Could there all be, I'm confused again, but.
It will, it's, yeah, I'm confused as well.
My track record this meeting is.
Let me check.
If you scroll past the memo, there's.
Yes, yeah, it does say on the memo, on the, the new language, the new additional language, thank you, is the planning board may waive planting strips if it deems appropriate, if it deems appropriate only for the portion and number of parking spaces that are covered by one or more photovoltaic canopies. And also, the number of trees per fifteen parking, but, 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 wait a minute, let me see if that's any different. Okay. "The number of trees per fifteen parking spaces shall be tabulated for all spaces unless the planning board finds that for spaces covered by photovoltaic canopies, there is no adequate location onsite to meet the requirement for those covered spaces." So, that does.
So, that's why I take Counselor Murphy's motion to.
Yeah. To amend with that language is fine.
Yeah, and for the record, this was the irresistible force versus the movable object, which is trees versus solar panels in Northampton. And this was the same ordinance, but it gives, under extraordinary circumstances, the planning board has some flexibility, but still, it essentially accomplishes the same thing, so.
Exactly.
Thank you.
This was, this was inevitable at some point, that these, these two titrational.
These titrations would clash.
Yes.
Talking about the same space.
And that, and then, we lay it at the feet of the planning board. So, we kick it down that road, so. Any further discussion on this item? Okay, as amended, roll call, please.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Biddel?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.